If we could get our, our seats, we'll start the meeting here. It's seven o'clock. At this time, I would like to call to order the Oregon City Council regular meeting for September 22 of 2025. The time is 7:00 PM. Please join me in standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Ms. Snyder, if you would, please take a roll call of council members that are present.
Mrs. Ackerman?
Here.
Mr. Drake?
Here.
Mr. Horniac? Mrs. Pauloff?
Here.
Mr. Reeves?
Here.
Mr. Solander?
Here.
Mr. Wallensack?
Here.
Thank you. Mr. Horniac did get in contact with me. He had an emergency that took him out of town today, and he couldn't be here for the meeting, so I will seek a motion to excuse Mr. Horniac from tonight's regular meeting.
Mr. President?
Yes, Mrs. Pauloff?
I'm so moved.
Thank you, Mrs. Pauloff.
Second.
Second by Mr. Drake. Counsel, any objections? Hearing none, Mr. Horniac is excused from tonight's meeting. Also present at tonight's meeting are our Mayor Michael Seferian, our City Administrator Joe Major, our Clerk of Counsel, Josette Snyder, our Law Director Melissa Papora, Public Service Director Paul Roman, Police Chief Brandon Beegan, Assistant Police Chief Ryan Spangler, our Fire Chief Clayton O'Brien, our Finance Director Nick Roman, and our Building and Zoning Commissioner Stephen Schreik. At this time, the next order of business is to approve the meeting minutes from September 8, 2025, regular council meeting. Counsel?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Drake.
Second.
Second by Mr. Wallensack. Does anyone have any objections? Meeting minutes are accepted as presented. The first item on the agenda is persons and delegations. We have a few people that have signed in today. Up first will be Mr. Dunaway. Steve, if you would come up, please, and name an address for the record. And we have, since the last time you've been here, we have installed a five-minute speaking time, and you should be able to see the clock ahead of you.
Okay, don't take my time. Steve Dunaway, 24 South Coy, Oregon, Ohio. We've had so much negativity that I've decided to do something new. We're going to have Positive Steve Days from now on, okay? Our non-transparent city is real good about, if you go to them and you ask a question, and you ask for some information, that not even 24 hours later, you'll get information that you asked for. We should be proud and quit this bickering about our city. I don't know how many cities you might go to, but I have this wonderful spreadsheet here that goes from the year 2019 to 2024. I've asked people on council, who knows what the numbers are? I got 15 million over five years, just this after, just this evening here. Yeah, 5 million per year. No, we have managed with proper guidance from council voting on things to the administration of our city, operating the city, and the people that are loyal and love working for us in that length of time on infrastructure, important things that make this city what it is. $54 million. That's a combination of sewer re-lining, new water lines, a project that's been going on for 10 years to replace every single inch of water line in this city that's almost complete. The major repairs, the safety repairs down here on Navarre Avenue, Coy, Northeast Morland, all the stuff we're doing. $54 million. However, there's a shortfall on that. A shortfall, I call it a shortfall because without money coming from the state and the feds, we wouldn't be able to do all these wonderful things. But because we have a wonderful person that works for us, Mr. Roman here, and a wonderful engineering department, during that period that we spent the 54 million, we spent just shy, we brought in just shy of $20 million that Paul likes to call other people's taxes. Literally money from the state and the feds that we don't have to pay back. 20 million out of 54 million. I think our city's pretty well managed and cared for. So that's my good for the day. My bad for the day is, keep hearing about how we were sold down the river on the 911 system. The 911 system got changed because of a law change in 2012. I don't read the local paper. I don't watch the local news. I get all of my news and information out of Columbus, Columbus Dispatch being one. And I think that I want to make sure that everybody's on board. I know Joel is, because I talked to him about this this morning. Our centralized 911, that's only the start. I don't know how many of you have heard of the Department of Administrative Services. This is the State of Ohio 911 Steering Committee. And they are in the process in Auglares County to implement their new pilot program. It'll be five counties with one call center, all AI-driven. This is coming, and we need to be at the seat. I think Joel was, you were in agreement with me? We want to at least be at the table, listening to these people before it happens? Before this nine, you know, we don't, the, the Columbus Dispatch reported this. Hamilton County is going to have a call center because they have over a million people in that county. We can't come up with that in five counties up here. We're going to end up with one call center, and I just think we should be prepared because we're not going to like it when it happens. But it's the state that's doing this, not the local government, not our county government. It's the state government that's doing it. So you guys should all take time to look up.
30 seconds, Steve.
Take some time to look up this Department of Administrative Services because they're going to be in our life, and we're not going to like it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next up on the, up to speak is Jim Davis. Mr. Davis, if you would, name an address for the record.
My name is Jim Davis. I live at 5494 Bay Shore Road in Oregon, Ohio. I have a Facebook account, and I am on LinkedIn. Or you have probably seen a lot of posts lately from me on the Oregon site on Facebook. The reason for this is I felt the information put out by the city has been one-sided and has been a disservice to this community. There are many communities that have felt a negative impact of data centers upon their quality of living, including water quality, air pollution, and noise. This is an important decision, and I feel that the residents of Ohio deserve to hear from both sides. The City Law Director was kind enough to provide me with documents that provided me with a timeline of this process. I have been going through them to get an understanding of where everything went down. What I found is disturbing. Apparently, the city or the ODF was contacted by Will Turner from a company called Altera through the Jobs Ohio Organization. At some point, Mr. Mazur and possibly others were asked to sign a nondisclosure agreement to prevent them from discussing or revealing any details about negotiations regarding the data center. Clearly, someone knew something was, something very early on, is between February 23 and July 2024, the city accumulated multiple pieces of property with the goal of assembling a large contiguous piece of property at the corner of Wind and Corduroy Roads. The explanation given at the time was that the city would designate this area as advanced manufacturing to provide a buffer zone from heavy industry on commercially zoned properties to the east. The public and the affected homeowners were told nothing about the reasons for these purchases or the large expenditures that the city was making. Shortly after, in September of 2024, an LLC was formed in the state of Florida by one of the principals of Altera. Letters went out to owners of the properties in question, informing them of the desire to purchase their property. Property owners were invited to a private meeting with Mr. Greg Bezilar from West Erie Realty. Residents were then put in a difficult position, either sell or possibly live with a huge construction project literally in their backyard. At the time, many of members of council were unaware of what the project was about or who might be involved, and were unable to answer questions from their own constituents on why and what the letters were all about. Yet, at a regular city council meeting, a large number of, large number of members from the IBEW showed up and supported the decision to move forward with the signing of a purchase agreement. Clearly, information was leaked, and to what purpose is patently obvious. All this time, the mayor and council did not disclose to the general public the nature and magnitude of this project. I will concede for the record that these topics were discussed at regular council meetings, but the large financial commitment that the city was planning and the reasons behind it should have been handled in a public forum rather than regular council meetings. I would be remiss in failing to point out that the contract language states an economic development agreement is to be negotiated at a later date. And although promises were made, no actual commitments by the LLC have been made as a signed agreement. This would include any stipulations that the project construction firm chosen would be local or would employ low-union labor. In fact, when asked, the mayor replied that once all the city would have no say in who the end user of this facility would be, and furthermore, if capacity or the, and the EODF knows, it has not been shared with the public. At the end of a regular council meeting, someone asked the mayor, how many buildings would be and what size? He stated eight buildings of 200,000 square feet each. We have yet to see a site plan of this facility. At an August 4, 2025, meeting, members of the LLC were present to discuss the data center. At one time, one of them.
One minute?
Perhaps in jest, that you can pretty it up, but in the end, it's just a large house, a warehouse with computers in it. Well, in this case, it's apparently eight large warehouses of 200,000 square feet each, plus electrical substations, a power plant, and all the required support systems, including cooling systems, ventilation, emergency generators, et cetera. I urge the citizens of Ohio to pay attention and to be informed, and I urge members of this council to consider holding a public referendum to allow the citizens, what we're going to ask questions of the developer and to decide for themselves if this project is appropriate for the future, future of this community. A decision of this importance should not be left to a few public officials with vested, vested interest in the outcome. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Davis. Next up is Mrs. Laura Davis. If you would please give your name and address for the record, please.
Laura Davis, 5494.
You can pull that down if you like.
5494 Bay Shore Road. I'm speaking tonight on the Honey Fest. The United Neighbors of Oregon were very disappointed that our booth was canceled for the Honey Festival. We had been preparing and gathering information only to be canceled three days before the event. The excuse, the excuses given by Mr. Mazur were, we were not a nonprofit. This is irrelevant since we were not selling anything. There were only two choices on the application form, business or nonprofit. Again, this is irrelevant and just an invalid excuse for banning our group from the Honey Fest. Mr. Mazur assumed it was a political protest. We were only going to pass out flyers about the data centers, collect names and emails, and talk to people. There was not going to be picketing or chanting or waving of signs, but merely a quiet interaction with the public. I was also told that there were no political signs allowed on city property. Our group is not a political group. Although I understand the rule, I disagree that our group is a political group. We are not running for anything. As of yet, the data center has not been added to the voting ballot. The United Neighbors of Oregon Coalition is an environmental and informant, informational group. A coalition is defined as a temporary or ongoing alliance formed by two or more parties who cooperate for a common goal, often to gain more influence and power than they could achieve individually. Therefore, I believe that this is the real reason for the cancellation, fear that we are gaining more influence and power than we could achieve individually. This First Amendment violation of freedom of speech was obviously another attempt to keep the public from being informed and involved. The public has a right to know how our living conditions will decrease if a data center is allowed to invade our community. After a lengthy conversation with Mr. Mazur, he basically asked that I not speak out and distract from the beekeepers. I reluctantly added, reluctantly agreed to not show up at the Honey Festival. However, my committee members were not on board with my decision. It was only after the Facebook blast that he posted we were allowed to show up and walk around and pass out our literature. I had already agreed not to go, and still being upset about the whole situation, I avoided the event. I agreed to not show up, but I did not agree to shut up. Our YOLO group is gaining support, and we will continue to get the word out.
Thank you, Mrs. Davis. Next up is Mr. Ellerbush. Jim, if you would, please, your name and address for the record.
Jim Ellerbush, 39 Cedarwood Drive. Thank you, Council President. I've watched a lot of these council meetings, been reading social media, and I'm, I'm hearing all these things about going against this data center because we're a farming community, the noise, the water usage, and just, just all these things. And I don't have time to address all that tonight, but I do want to let the council and the administration know that I'm 100% behind this data center. When you put a parcel together that large, there's many options that could go in there. Maybe a refinery, maybe a chemical processing plant. Along with these other options, you're going to get rail spurs in there. You're going to get 2,000 cars a day from the employees coming to man these jobs. You could have 100, 150 extra semis a day on our roads in Oregon. So I am behind this data center. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ellerbush. Next on our list is Jim Copac. Did I say that right? Mr. Copac, if you would, name an address for the record. If you need to, you can take the mic and move that up a little bit. Thank you.
Thank you. James Copac, my working address is 10 Church Circle, Annapolis, Maryland, 21401. I'm just here to thank the council for reviewing our application for the new cell tower at 4400.
Excuse me, Mr. Reeves. We're going to have a public hearing to address.
Would you like to talk, speak at that time?
Yes. That would be, we're going to have a specific public hearing.
Sorry to, I mean, didn't mean to cut you off, but would you give you more time at that? There wouldn't be a five minute. Okay, thank you. Oh, I'm sorry. Up next, Pete Rayner. Mr. Rayner, if you would, please give your name and address for the record. Okay. Up next, I believe it's Jonathan Perry. Mr. Perry, if you would, name an address for the record.
Jonathan Perry, 4104 Lynn Drive. Hello, everyone. I'm back. And I just want to begin by thanking each of you for the work that you're doing on behalf of our community in leading in times of change is never easy. As a business and nonprofit coach, I do a lot of work with institutions going through change. And when I do that, I, I realize the juxtaposition that can happen and the tension that can happen. And so whether it's new data centers or whether it's shopping centers, it brings both opportunity and challenge. But the very fact that we're having these conversations shows that our community is valued, that people want to invest here, and that the future of our city is worth building. So as you deliberate, I encourage you to remember that leadership is rarely about choosing between good and bad. It's almost always about choosing between competing goods. What's good here and what's good there? Do we protect the quiet, small-town feel that makes us who we are? Or do we make room for opportunities and new developments that are coming in? In moments like these, wisdom requires balance. And so this community of 19,500 people looks to you not only for your decisions, but also for your hope. Your leadership is a reminder that we're not just managing growth. We are stewarding a legacy for our children and our grandchildren. I want to encourage you, don't let the weight of the challenges blind you to the gift of the moment. You have the privilege of guiding a community that matters and making decisions that will bless families and businesses and neighborhoods for years to come. And if you don't, and you also need to remember, you don't carry this alone because there's a lot of people in this community that support you and believe in you. That's why you're sitting in these seats. Just remember that every decision, big or small, has the power to build a thriving community for this place that we call home. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Perry. With that being our last speaker of, or participation, audience, we will move on to our agenda items. Yes, Fran, if you would, come up and name an address for the record.
Francis Wilber, 3226.
Please pull the mic down. You can't, no, bend, the bendable part, no. Right there, yep, there, there you go.
Okay. Francis Wilber, 3226 Northeast Morland Drive, Oregon, Ohio. Okay, first question, I'm going to get it out of the way. Any studies, environmental noise, any of that? And if you guys don't do it, are we going to demand that they do it? Some sort of a study for our environmental, water, electric? I mean, this is all stuff that normally businesses do. They normally do. Everything I've read online, they don't tell anybody anything. That in itself, come on, guys, that makes it a little suspicious. What are they going to be doing in them buildings? What are they going to be doing in them buildings? Because they're not telling us. Anything I've read online, they're saying the same thing, the people are. No one's telling us anything. I might like it. Who knows? I've never seen it. But there is 64 billion worth of data centers right now that have been blocked or delayed in the United States because of the opposition of the citizens. So we do have a say, guys. If we all stand together, we do have a say on this. Am I right? I would think so. Amazon in Moreington, Virginia, delayed after significant backlash from residents. In 2020, they did a study in Chicago linked higher residential noise levels to an increased risk of cognitive impairment. There's a lot of health issues that can go along with this. I talked to a state official and was told, if I asked five times about any studies for the environmental testing, and I got no answer, here's the deal, guys. When someone dies in connection with this data center, and the fact that we're going to do construction 24/7 for two to three years to build it, there's a chance. I've said it twice about getting some studies. So I was told the first person that gets hurt or loses their life, guess who they're going to come to? Right here. Because this is your job. We hired you. You're supposed to take care of us and look out for us. Am I right or wrong? Is that not what we voted everybody in for, make great decisions for us? I'm not so sure this is. And mostly because everything's being hit. That's what bothers me more than anything. On the ending, I found this kind of cool. Members who supported the data project that voted it in eventually lost their seat in a subsequent election. So remember that. If you've got the majority of citizens saying, we don't want it, you vote for it, guess who's going to be out the next time you come up for election? Because I'm here to tell you, citizens are mad. They are tired, they want to wipe out everybody. Anybody and everybody. Because, I'm sorry, we hired you. You, it's up to you. It's your job to keep us informed. And you guys aren't doing it, and it's just all okay. I'm sorry, but as a citizen, I'm very disappointed. Very disappointed in our city. The stuff on Facebook, and I'm sorry, the slamming of Beth every time she turns around. Why? She's on council. All she does is go out and ask the right questions to people. Paul, I mean, I've talked to you before, you, you guys before, and got some pretty straight answers. And I appreciate that, I really do. Because so far, that's the only thing I've heard true outcomes from. I'm sorry. I think we should be able to see the contract. If not, it's a ball.
Thank you, Fran. With that being our last person to speak, we will move on to our agenda items for tonight. We need to add items 157 of 2025 through 160 of 2025 to tonight's agenda. Can I please have a motion to add these items to the agenda? So moved. Thank you, Mr. Wallensack.
Second.
Second by Mrs. Pauloff. Counsel, are there any objections? Hearing none. Items 157 of 2025 through 160 of 2025 have been added to tonight's agenda. I would like to open the public hearing at 7:25 for application SUE 190-25 for a special use in M1 light industrial zone district for the purpose of constructing a new wireless communication facility for Verizon Wireless. The application is James Copac, North Star Towers, for owner Naomi Kilburn. The location is 4400 Bay Shore Road. First, we're going to ask Mr. Schreick to give us a brief, or a summary for council and the administration and citizens. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Planning Commission met at its regular time on August 19, 2025 at 5:00 PM and reviewed this case. The applicant provided their engineering support of why they need to have a new tower rather than co-locating the equipment on an existing tower based on a coverage map that they provided, which we have available, if you would like to see that. James Copac with Smart Link Group, representing North Star Towers and Verizon, was there to answer any questions of the Planning Commission. He indicated that this new tower will tie in all three of the quadrant areas covered by other existing Verizon sites, as well as all of the Harborview area, and then additionally up along the roads a little bit more. And the new tower would be roughly 410 feet back off of the road. The Planning Commission approved it with a unanimous vote. We currently have a number of broadcast towers. Those are the towers that you see are the highest or tallest towers in Oregon, and there are five of those. However, there are 51 cell towers scattered throughout the Oregon area. When I say Oregon area, that is a radius that also includes Northwood. However, in the area near the water, there is a lack of coverage, which is kind of a dead zone, and so what they are trying to do is rectify that. Would you be able to pull up the map? So this is the location of the proposed tower. As you can see, it is well off of the roadway. Can you flip to the next, please? What is being proposed is a mono tower, so it would be a single pole, similar to the photograph on the left, and it would be 164 feet tall. The four feet is the lightning rod. Go to the next. On the upper right hand is the existing before the tower can be installed, and below is the proposed. As you can see, red shows good coverage. So you can see a huge increase in coverage from the top picture to the lower picture. What they have provided, and I've kind of blown this up, that in this instance, there were no suitable tall structures in the area that would meet the engineering needs of the project. Since there's no suitable tall structures for the co-location, it is necessary to construct a new tower at the proposed location. Next. And so that was provided by the engineers at Verizon, and again, showing the mapping of the coverage with a new tower. There's any questions? I'll entertain those of council.
Mr. President.
Mr. Salander?
Thank you, Mr. President. I just had just a question on the tower itself. I know the picture there showed just, I mean, a tower, you know, itself, but I know in some places I've seen they kind of are disguised, I guess, to look, you know, like a tree or anything like that, with it being out there near the water and so forth. I was just curious if there was any consideration in that, or if we're just looking at just like you see the picture there.
Mr. President, Mr. Salander, yes, it would be like the picture here. Typically, trying to disguise it often draws more attention to it because it becomes larger. As well as, if it is not in a cluster or grove of trees, it's really going to stand out like a big Christmas tree, artificial Christmas tree.
Yeah, put some lights on there, nice little star.
So this is pretty typical of what you will see in new cell tower construction.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Mr. Schreick.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Counsel, anything further? At this time, is there anybody here that would like to speak in opposition or for the proposed Verizon tower?
Just here to answer any questions that the board may have in regards to the project.
Mr. President.
Mr. Wallensack.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Copac, looking beyond this monopole tower, do you see any other areas of Oregon that you think in the future, as people use more phones, more data, more connections, are we looking at more towers in Oregon beyond this?
That's a good question, and I can only say I'm here for regard to the Verizon, this specific tower. I do not know what the future development is. I do know that this tower is designed for three carriers. So if someone like AT&amp;T or T-Mobile would like to come in, this is a co-locatable structure that is designed for three carriers. So that should help also. I tell the story that 15 years ago, when it was talking text only on your phone, you could put a tower up and it was good for five miles, and, you know, it would take all the capacity and the coverage of that area. Now it's data. It's a data transfer device. It's movies, streaming, download, emails. So the way the FCC regulates us, it isn't like we can just crank up the antennas on these things and just broadcast more bandwidth out there. We're restricted at a level that the FCC deems as a safe level for, you know, for the exposure of RF. So as more and more people come into the area and more and more devices get used, there's a chance, you know, I don't know where that would be, but I just know right now this fits in with the Verizon, the Verizon capacity and trying to help the coverage for the area.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Wallensack. Counsel, if you would, we can't hear if it-
What I was wondering is, is there anything that could be made for a mono tower to be more aesthetically pleasing, like paint? Maybe make it a little bit camouflaged as opposed to just a big silver tower?
Yeah, it seems like in the, it seems like in the history of these things and the way they're built, with the grayish skies and the different, they found it to galvanize color. A lot of ordinance even have it in their ordinance for that to be painted a gray galvanized color. You know, I guess it kind of just blends, you know, with the background skies most of the time. So I have seen some that were painted light blue, like the sky, and if it's not against the sky backdrop, it doesn't, it actually sticks out more, you know? So that's basically, like I said, the reason I, they actually have that painted galvanized on them.
Counsel, anything further for Mr. Copac?
Mr. President?
Mrs. Ackerman?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm not sure about anybody else, but whenever I'm on I-475 and on the east side of I-475, there is one that it looks like a tree, it's supposed to look like a tree, and my eyes are drawn to it every time at how fake it looks. So I guess blending in with a typical Ohio sky most of the time. I get that, so I get that.
Thank you, Mrs. Ackerman. Counsel, anything further? Thank you, Mr. Copac.
Thank you.
Is there anybody that's in opposition of this? Hearing none. I will close the public hearing at 7:37, and I will assign it ordinance 156, or it should be 157?
No, 156.
156 of 2025 as ordinance 156 of 2025. And ask Ms. Snyder to please read it into the record.
Authorizing a special use permit for parcel 4451707 for property located at 4400 Bay Shore Road, Oregon, Ohio, for the purpose of constructing a new wireless communication facility for Verizon Wireless on the property in an M1 light industrial zone district.
Thank you. Counsel?
Mr. President.
Mr. Wallensack.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, I move for passage of ordinance number 156 of 2025.
Thank you, Mr. Wallensack.
Second.
Second. Was that Ms. Ackerman?
Yes.
Mrs. Ackerman? Thank you. Ms. Snyder, will you please take a roll call vote of counsel?
Mr. Wallensack?
Yes.
Mrs. Ackerman?
Yes.
Mr. Drake?
Yes.
Mrs. Pauloff?
Yes.
Mr. Reeves?
Yes.
Mr. Salander?
Thank you. Ordnance 156 of 2025 does pass with a vote of seven yays, zero nays, or no, excuse me, six yays, zero nays. Our next item on the agenda for consideration and passage is item 157 of 2025 presented by Mayor Seferian and our city administrator, Joel Mazur. Mr. Mazur?
Thank you, Mr. President and counsel. This ordinance would allow the city to enter into the amended agreement with the Toledo-Lucas County Health Department. And I know I sent this out to everybody several weeks back, just for kind of early review of it before it came onto the agenda. And in the packet, you'll see where it's been amended, redlined, and basically what this would do is, we have a contract with the Health Department now. We pay it roughly, I want to say $183,000 a year to the Health Department to provide the services that they provide. They do have a statistical sort of breakdown of what they do for the city of Oregon and also how many hours basically they spend in the city of Oregon. So there's a lot of time that they spend here, a lot of services they provide. Also, there's a spreadsheet in the packet as well, kind of shows the proportional breakdown of why this amendment is needed and how much it would cost the city in addition. So we pay $183,000 now. This would be for five years, an additional $53,989 each year, and this is to accommodate the move from the current location, the Health Department building that's on Erie Street in downtown Toledo, to the, what is now the former Diocese Building that is on Spielbusch Avenue in downtown Toledo. So just from my experience, back when I worked for the city of Toledo, I've been through the building, back then, the building was in very rough shape, and I can't imagine what it's like now, other than continued mold growth and leaks and things like that. I deemed it the most unhealthy building that a Health Department could be in. So, you know, that's saying a lot, because, you know, I know they've been there a long time, but just the way the setup is now, it's just not a good location for them, in my opinion. I think the move is a good move for the longevity of the Health Department, not just because of the condition of the new building that they'd be moving into, but also because of accessibility right now. If you've been to the Health Department, had a visit there for whatever reason, the parking is atrocious because it's a shared parking lot with several different entities, and if you're trying to get there during regular business hours, good luck finding a spot. And then you'll have to, you know, find a spot on the street or, you know, some other location. So it's tough to get into the Health Department where it is now. Great visibility, a lot of traffic, but just tough to get into. So new location provides plenty of parking for anybody that needs to go to the- So new location provides plenty of parking for anybody that needs to go to the Health Department and get any of the services that they provide. So outside of that, we have Shannon Jones, Dave Welch here from the Health Department to help answer any questions if anybody has them. So with that, I'll turn it back over to you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Major. Counsel, any, any additional questions or any questions to the administration? Hearing none, I will assign ordinance one, or item 157 of 2025 as ordinance 157 of 2025 and ask Ms. Snyder to please read it into the record.
A resolution authorizing the mayor and finance director to enter into an amendment to the regional combined health district agreement between communities within the geographical jurisdiction of Lucas County to extend the agreement for a period of January 1, 2023 to December 31, 2030 and declaring an emergency.
Thank you, Ms. Snyder. Counsel?
Mr. President.
Mr. Drake?
I move for item 157 dash 2025 for passage emergency measure.
Thank you, Mr. Drake.
Second.
Second by Mr. Wallensack. We, Ms. Snyder, will you please take a roll call vote of counsel?
Mr. Drake?
Oh, yeah.
Mr. Wallensack?
Yes.
Mrs. Ackerman?
Yay.
Mrs. Pauloff?
Yes.
Mr. Reeves?
Yes.
Mr. Salander?
Yay.
Thank you. Ordinance 157 of 2025 does pass with a vote of six yays, zero nays. The next item on the agenda for, for consideration is pa, and passage is item number 158 of 2025 presented by Mayor Seferian and our finance director, Nick Roman. Mr. Roman, do you want to combine them both?
Yeah, sure, that'd be nice. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Go ahead, Mr. Roman.
So these two resolutions are, are annual resolutions that come from the Budget Commission of Lucas County. The first one is accepting the amounts and rates as shown in the graph on the ordinance. We have two mills on the inside mill limit and they are estimating those amounts to be $1,250,000 for our general fund and then $220,000 for the police pension fund on that first item. The second resolution, 159 of 2025, is for an advanced tax payment. This basically just allows us to receive the funds about a month earlier than we would otherwise.
Thank you, Mr. Roman. Counsel, any questions for Mr. Roman? Hearing none, I will, I will assign ordinance, or item 158 of 2025 as ordinance 158 of 2025 and ask Ms. Snyder to please read it into the record.
A resolution accepting the amounts and rates as determined by the Budget Commission of Lucas County, Ohio, authorizing the tax levies and certifying the same to the county auditor.
Thank you, Mrs. Snyder. Counsel?
Mr. President.
Mr. Wallensack?
Mr. President, before I make a motion to move this forward, are these supposed to be resolutions or are they supposed to be ordinances?
Excuse me, they are resolutions, so.
Therefore, I will, I will make a motion to move resolution number 158 of 2025, or not move, but for passage of resolution number 158 of 2025.
Thank you, Mr. Wallensack.
Second.
Second by Mr. Drake. Ms. Snyder, would you please take a roll call vote of counsel?
Mr. Wallensack?
Yes.
Mr. Drake?
Yay.
Mrs. Ackerman?
Yay.
Mrs. Pauloff?
Yes.
Mr. Reeves?
Yes.
Mr. Salander?
Yay.
Thank you. Resolution of 158 of 2025 does pass with a vote of six yays, zero nays. The next item we've, Mr. Roman has already talked about, are there any additional questions on ordinance 150, or excuse me, resolution 159 of 2025? Hearing none, I will assign item 159 of 2025 as resolution 159 of 2025 and ask Ms. Snyder to please read it into the record.
A resolution requesting the auditor of Lucas County, Ohio for an advance payment of the current collection of taxes due the city of Oregon.
Thank you, Ms. Snyder. Counsel?
Mr. President.
Mr. Wallensack?
Thank you, Mr. President. I move for passage of resolution number 159 of 2025.
Thank you. Mr. Wallensack?
Second.
Second by Mr. Drake. Thank you, Mr. Drake. Ms. Snyder, will you please take a roll call vote of counsel?
Mr. Wallensack?
Yes.
Mr. Drake?
Yay.
Mrs. Ackerman?
Yay.
Mrs. Pauloff?
Yes.
Mr. Reeves?
Yes.
Mr. Salander?
Yay.
Thank you. Resolution 159 of 2025 does pass with a vote of six yays, zero nays. The next item on the agenda for consideration is pass and passage is item number 160 of 2025, and that's presented by Mayor Seferian, our public service director, Paul Roman. Mr. Roman?
Thank you, Mr. President. This ordinance is needed to proceed with the sanitary sewer rehab, rehabilitation project phase three, part B. The project area is in the East Morland Star Extension neighborhoods. A map of the project areas included in exhibit A. The boundary is Whaling on the west side, North Vale on the north side, Berlin on the east side, East Morland Drive on the south side. A lot of the sewers, you'll see them highlighted in yellow, range in size from eight inch to 15 inch, and the total length of sewer is around 8,500 feet. These sewers are constructed of non-reinforced concrete and they were installed in 1940. And they're definitely beyond their, their age. They're still structurally sound, but obviously they have a lot of joints that are offset or cracks and broken lateral surfaces. They're definitely a, a big source of what we call infiltration, inflow that gets into our sanitary sewer system. And obviously, it's something you're treating that you shouldn't be. So anyways, the, we bid this out as two projects. The, the project one is the main lining and as well as the laterals, and project two is, is point repairs with traditional open cut excavation. The bid tab and the bid reviews in exhibit A and United Survey has done work in the city before and have done a good job, and Buckeye Excavating has also done a good job. They would be hired for the point repairs. They're also doing the East Morland storm sewer work, so. And beyond that, happy to answer any que, well, and we did receive a low interest loan from the EPA. I did put in an exhibit in the back to explain what our costs would be for that loan. And if you recall, when we did increase our front foot assessment for sanitary sewers, that was to go towards projects like this, and that's what it's going for. So happy to answer any other questions.
Thank you, Mr. Roman. Counsel? Any questions on hearing none? I will assign item 160 of 2025 as ordinance 160 of 2025 and ask Ms. Snyder to please read it into the record.
Accepting the bids of United Survey Incorporated, 25145 Broadway Avenue, Oakwood Village, Ohio, for project number one, rehabilitation and Buckeye Excavating and Construction Incorporated, 191 State Route 61 East Norwalk, Ohio, for project number two, excavation to furnish labor materials and equipment for the sanitary sewer rehabilitation project phase three, part B, projects one and two, authorizing the mayor, director of public service, and finance director to enter into a contract with said contractors and declaring an emergency.
Thank you, Ms. Snyder. Counsel?
Mr. President.
Mr. Drake?
I move for passage of item 160 dash 2025 as an emergency.
Sir, Mr. Drake, you mean ordinance 160, correct?
I'm sorry, yes.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Pauloff. Ms. Snyder, will you please take a raw, a roll call vote of counsel?
Mr. Drake?
Yay.
Mrs. Pauloff?
Yes.
Mrs. Ackerman?
Yay.
Mr. Reeves?
Yes.
Mr. Salander?
Yay.
Mr. Wallensack?
Yes.
Thank you. Ordinance 160 of 2025 does pass with a vote of six yays to zero nays. Counsel, we have a liquor permit on the agenda to consider this evening. I would, I'm going to send it over to Police Chief Brandon Beegan. Mr. Beegan?
Thank you, Mr. President. We did receive the paperwork from Liquor Control regarding this liquor permit. The initial liquor permit was put in in 2019. I did speak with somebody from Liquor Control and they said that oftentimes this will happen when somebody's trying to transfer a liquor permit for business purposes. We did conduct the background check, we had no objections to it. I sent the paperwork back to Liquor Control, and I also put in a copy of the Ares document showing that the business has transferred from BJ's Hideaway into another business is what it went into on September 16th. So they said, go ahead and process it as normal, they'll do their site work and all the backend work on it and see if it's eligible to be transferred, approved, and then transferred to the new business.
Counsel?
Mr. President?
Mrs. Ackerman?
Some of the, the residents around the, that property, they asked me to, yeah, get an explanation that it's confusing. So why, why don't they, why doesn't BJ's Hideaway just amend their address in their application and instead of, it just seems strange that it was, it was started so long ago that, and I, I understand, you know, it's, it's the government, so, but what you initially applied for it as, but it seems, they're, they're concerned, is there any chance that it would be used at that location? Is there all of the impression that it's a hair salon or a beauty salon? So what would be the timeframe, you know, from the time that they receive it for that location? Or would it, or would it follow just the name of the business? I just, I guess I don't understand why they didn't just change the address and to, because BJ's Hideaway is no longer, I mean, I know that's the business name, but I guess I want to assure the, the residents there that it, the use is not going to be anything other than at that location on Mollendorf than what currently we understand it to be as a, as a salon. Does that make sense?
Mr. President?
Mr. Be.
So I, I don't know what the intended use will be. There's no way of us knowing that. We can do the background check. I can guess that maybe the salon may be wanting to use the liquor permit. I know that it's becoming more popular, more common for salons to serve wine or beer during services, and I don't know all the services that, that they do there, but that would be my best guess. I looked at the listing for the auction for BJ's Hideaway when it did go up earlier this year, and it was for the business, the property, and the liquor permit. So I can't say whether or not the new owner will be using it for that, but that would be my best guess as to why it's happening and what they'd be looking to do. From my understanding of that, you still go through the, excuse me, the permit process with this of updating the liquor permit before it can be transferred, and then we would start all back over again with the new business, doing the background check on the owner. But this is the first time that we've dealt with this, and that's information that Liquor Control could provide to us, that we should just continue the process as is, and they would do the backend work.
So, so it's for the location that's why they're, it just seemed a little vague and so you, is it possible, I saw that as an option and this is probably a question for Ms. Popera, that to do the 30-day waiting or extension so that we get an explanation from the salon what their goal, what their intentions are and give the residents an opportunity to respond? I didn't know how timely this is. I mean, there's a lot of construction to do there. I'm assuming we still have a bit of time before they open their doors, I don't know.
Mr. President?
Mr. Mayor?
And, and I have had a lot of experience with people that had liquor transfers, and the only option the counsel would have would be to request a hearing. And, and the Board of Liquor Control is very specific at what you can make an objection on. And so the person wouldn't have to respond to what they were doing, they have that right. So you, you got a very specific group of things, I think there's about eight of them that you can object to, and if they don't meet or not meet any of that criteria, they get it. It's not, you don't have a say.
The, the, excuse me, sir, the, this says ask for your one-time only 30-day extension? Is that?
They're entitled if they have, to, to transfer a license. If they meet the criteria, which I'm quite sure they do, you could object, but they won't hear your objection.
So the 30-day extension from the Department of Commerce, that's just, that means nothing?
Mr. President, Ms. Ackerman, you are correct. The city can ask for an extension. The extension is typically for us to do the background checks and, from the different departments. It's not utilized to get information as to utilization. And then at that point, the mayor is correct by stating that we have a criteria for asking for a hearing, and if it's met, that after that hearing, then they would then make a decision of whether they're going to grant that transfer or not. But it is a difficult burden to raise. We have had hearings before unsuccessfully, but we have tried, just because what we need to meet are very specific. And as far as trying to inquire what that purpose is, that wouldn't be, meet one of those criterias.
So that being it's in a residential area, those res, the, the neighboring homes, they, they have no recourse, this is, they're of the impression, I don't personally have an issue, like I've gone to salons, they offer you a glass of wine. It's not a, you know, I'm hoping that's all it is, but I think that some of the citizens were residents, neighboring residents, were not able to attend this evening for, because of a medical emergency in their family. So do we have any recourse then for them to have, know what the purpose is? It's just kind of, do you understand where I'm just, I'm looking out for them, I just want them to know that there's no other, it's not going to be utilized for anything other than what we, but we're assuming. I don't, I guess I don't like the open-endedness of it.
Mr. President?
Chief?
If I may, so this is just for the initial part. If it is going to be transferred to another business, they have to go through the transfer process, which then brings it back to us to do the background check, and then we go through the same process as a normal liquor transfer.
Okay, thank you.
Is, is how they explained it to me.
That, that makes sense, thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Counsel, anything further?
Thank you.
Okay. Says, may I have a motion to request our clerk of counsel to either check the box requesting a hearing for this liquor permit or to check the box that we are, we are not having a, a hearing?
So are we going to request it not, you have, needing a hearing or does it need a hearing?
Mr. President?
Mr. Mayor?
If you were going to request a hearing, you would want to, you would want to list one of the things that you thought that it did not meet their criteria, which I'm certain they all do meet the criteria, so.
So we do not want?
So we do not, so I move that we mark the box that we do not need a hearing.
Thank you, Ms. Pauloff. Second, Mr. Wallensack. Thank you, Ms. Pauloff and Mr. Wallensack. So Ms. Snyder, we are, please check the box waiving the hearing for this liquor permit with no hearing, okay? With that, with all the items on the agenda for this evening, we will now move on to the mayor's report.
Thank you, Mr. President, and I believe you got the correspondence that I have received from Oregon Fire and Rescue, and with that, I would ask counsel's concurrence in the acceptance of the resignation retirement of Robert Briggs as part-time firefighter, EMT with the fire department effective September 9, 2025.
Thank you, Mayor. Counsel?
Mr. President?
Yes, Ms. Pauloff?
I move to concur with the mayor's acceptance of the resignation of Robert Briggs from fire department effective September 9, 2025.
Thank you, Ms. Pauloff.
Second.
Was that Mr. Salander? Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Salander. Counsel, any objections? Hearing none, counsel concurs.
And next, I'd ask counsel's concurrence in the acceptance of the resignation from Richard Sebenauer from the Oregon Wastewater Treatment Plan Operator 2, and the effective date would be September 30, 2025.
Counsel?
Mr. President?
Mr. Salander?
I'd like to make a motion to concur with the mayor on the, accepting the resignation of Richard Sebenauer Jr. as technician operator 2 at the City of Oregon Wastewater Treatment Plan effective September 30, 2025.
Thank you, Mr. Salander.
Second.
Second by Ms. Pauloff. Thank you, Ms. Pauloff. Counsel, any objections? Second by Mrs. Pauloff. Thank you, Mrs. Pauloff. Counsel, any objections? Hearing none. Mayor, counsel concurs.
Thank you, and that would complete my report. Thanks.
Mr. Major.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just one item. I just wanted to, a lot of people involved with planning and organizing Honey Fest was a great event. We, you know, internally, we, we debriefed a little bit this morning and, and felt that the attendance was a little bit more than last year. Seems to be growing every year. I think with some of the additions that we made, it, it enhanced it even more, and as the years go on, you know, we, we've been refining it. But I definitely wanted to give a special thank you to the Chamber, Eastern Mommy Bay Chamber of Commerce, and the Mommy Valley Beekeepers Association. Without them, the, the event doesn't exist the way it does. So it, I know that the beekeepers really like this event, and they do put a lot into this between judging, setting up their booths, you know, getting the information out to the area beekeepers, you know, even as daring as putting on a bee beard. I don't know if anybody caught that, but that is a really intense demonstration. So all, all the little things add up, and, and all the individuals involved really helped out. Couldn't do it without everybody. So I just wanted to say thanks to everybody. It was a great event.
Thank you, Mr. Major. Ms. Popora.
No report, Mr. President.
Thank you, Ms. Popora. Mr. Roman.
No report, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Roman. Ms. Pauloff.
No report, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mrs. Pauloff. Mr. Wallensack.
Mr. President, I have no report from my committee this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Wallensack. Mrs. Ackerman.
I just wanted to say that I, I do believe you can still sign up for Clean Your Streams this Saturday morning. I believe you can go on the city website, and I'm signed up. I don't know if you're, he's gotta work, but please consider joining us, even if it's for an hour, to help recognize Clean Our, Clean Your Streams. I believe Andrew Beard's probably heading it up, probably so. I wanted to, Police, Police Chief Bean, your blood drive is Wednesday, correct? How many spots do you have open yet? Oh, okay. I just, I mean, they can, you can go, still go on the city website for that? Or Red Cross, if you have a, right, right, if you have the app, yeah. So I just, let's see, I'm trying to think of, there was other things. I saw the announcement, I saw the live announcement of the Army Corps of Engineers in the city of Toledo about the water line, and I was, I'm gonna ask Mr. Roman, do we have a copy of the map, since it's gonna traverse the entire city for their new water line? They showed this great big map, and I, on there, do we have a copy yet?
Mr. President, Mrs. Ackerman, I don't know if I have anything current other than the last presentation me and Mr. Salander went to, but I, I, I know it follows the same path as their existing pipes. It's literally gonna be in the middle of their other two pipes. I know that, so. Most property owners are familiar with it, that where it crosses their land now, so.
I was mainly trying to, like, zoom in, take a picture, zoom in, and see where that reservoir is gonna be, and it looks like it's in its present planned location?
At Wind Road, yeah.
Okay, all right. Thank you. That, that is all. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Ackerman. Mr. Salander.
Thank you, Mr. President. Nothing from my standing committee, just a couple quick things. I'm gonna kind of piggyback a few of them here. But Honey Fest, it was a good time. I really enjoyed it. Out there, and it seemed like people were, were having fun. So I agree. I think it was more attended than, than the previous, so it keeps growing. So, well done on that to everybody, everybody involved. I know you touched on that. And then I was gonna say the blood drive too, so I'll see you at 8:00 AM. But unfortunately, I can't do the cleaning, Clean Your Steam, Streams, because I worked this weekend, but anyhow.
You have to go out on your own.
Yeah, I have to just go out on my own. But, and then lastly, I just had a question. So we've been promising the citizens, this town hall, with the developers, to have some questions answered from the developers themselves and have that conversation. And I know we've said we were gonna have it, we were gonna have it in September, and it's the 22nd. So I'm wondering, what, what steps have we taken so far, and do we know a, even a rough time by chance of when that could be?
Mr. President.
Mr. Major.
Mr. Salander. Thanks for that. We've, you know, we, we talk frequently with the developer to try to get up to speed on some of the, as you know, in one of the amendments, that I think it was the most recent amendment that was voted on in August, included the information from the detailed load study. So they're still trying to clear some of the hurdles before we get to, you know, the, the point where they, they would want to commit to that. So they want to clear some hurdles and then have that clarity and that, that, you know, more firmness of, of, I'm trying to, contingencies, that's the word I'm thinking of, the contingencies in the contract. They want to clear some of those hurdles before that. So the last I heard, which was today, is that, you know, all along it's been this detailed load study with First Energy, and, you know, I know we were critical at first of the slow process and sometimes that it takes. But in the last few weeks, they've progressed, advanced that load study quite a bit to, to the point of near completion, which is, which is great news. That, that's a good sign that the project for them is, is viable, because without that, it's, there's no, there's no viability to the project. So they wanted to clear that. But I will definitely pass that along and, and love to, you know, talk about getting something on the books and then get, get something going, so.
Yeah.
I don't have an exact date, but if there's.
I think Mr. Shreik was, no?
Yeah, if there, if there is a, a specific date, I mean, is, if, you know, please give us, give us some feedback. Let us know what, what date, time, and we, we can, we can try to coordinate on, on people's calendars and schedules.
Yeah, 'cause I think it'd be good to, you know, I mean, I feel like if we get too far along into it, it's gonna be like, well, you're just patronizing us now, you know, and patronizing the citizens, citizens, and I think that they deserve that opportunity to be able to have those conversations, you know, have those questions answered from them. Because frankly, the information we've been getting, I feel, at least from the city, has been changing. It's been molding around and changing, and the numbers go up and down and all around, and, and, you know, that, that damages the trust between the citizens and the city, and truly myself too. It starts to make me question. So I just think it's really important that we get to that as soon as we possibly can.
Yep, understood.
But I think Mr. Shreik had something.
Mr. Shreik, do you have anything to add?
Excuse me. Mr. President, not in regards to this, but I did have one item that I'd like to go on record. My office has received a lot of complaints regarding signs. It is the season of signs because of the upcoming election, but I'd like to read our, from our sign code, 1337.07 Prohibitions, Signs in the Public Rightofway. No sign, except for exempted signs, such as street signs and, and public signs such as that, shall be placed on or above the public rightofway. Any signs in the public rightofway, except for those exempted, may be immediately removed by the city. So I just want to go on record that if anyone knows their candidates, make sure that they are properly placed on the property outside of the rightofway. That is for the safety of drivers, and it is very important that we adhere to that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Shreik. Mr. Salander, are you finished with your report?
Yes, I am. Thank you, thank you very much, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Salander. Mr. Drake?
Nothing from my committee. I'd, I'd just like to thank Paul Roman. I talked to Paul, and it was two weeks ago, about the old East Morland and new East Morland, light fixtures had electrical tape covering the, the boxes, and I drove by there today, and it appears they're all fixed. So I want to thank Paul for doing that. And also with the, the signs Mr. Shreik brought up, I know I got a call, I believe it was Friday or Saturday, one of mine was in the rightofway, and it's pretty vague where the rightofway is. Some people say it's behind the telephone poles, the sidewalk. I know you said it was an anonymous call, which maybe it wa, is, maybe it wasn't. I know I wasn't the only one that day you told me, so. I just hope, if, if you're gonna start ripping signs out, you know, just remember, people can put a sign in maybe the proper area, but who's to say the homeowner, somebody's gonna take it and move it? And, you know, and you were very polite when you called, and within 20 minutes, I had it taken care of, which is fine. But, you know, and, and that's good that there's a concern about it, but I kind of wish there'd be a, a bigger concern with a lot of the weed lots and blithe places that I've complained about for months. Some years, like the, the parking lot that's been in court by the Old In-N-Out Mart. So, like I said, it's, yeah, the signs are a big deal, but I think there's probably a lot bigger issues, in my opinion, that probably need tackled more than whether a sign's an inch or two out of the boundaries. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Drake. I have nothing from my standing committee. If there is no further business for, before counsel, I seek a motion to adjourn.
Mr. President, Mr. President, excuse me. I, there was just, America 250, Joel is tomorrow. Is that open to the public, or that's like four o'clock tomorrow here? I'm sorry, is that, is that?
Sorry, I'm checking my calendar.
Okay.
Just wanna make sure.
Sorry, I forgot to ask you earlier.
It's, it's four o'clock, and it's just anybody that, that requested to be on it, so if anybody else wants to show up, more than welcome.
Okay, great, thank you.
We'll, we'll probably change the location in here rather than in there, if it's, if it's gonna grow anymore, because it's already kind of growing into something a little bigger. Also, Wednesday, the 24th is the, oh, I'm sorry, Wednesday, the 24th at 4:30 PM, the Police and Fire softball game is scheduled. The winner plays the Bay Park Hospital team as part of some event that they're, that's in conjunction with Bay Park's event. So it's the annual Police and Fire softball game at 4:30 Wednesday, September 24th, at Oski Field.
So we're in the play-in game? The Bay Park?
Play-in game. Yes, it's the play-in game. That's right.
Good luck to both of yous. Okay, with that being said, I'll take, I'll seek a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Thank you, Mrs. Pauloff. Second by me. This meeting is adjourned.